The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November regular school board meeting. We'll kick things off with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening, Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Standen Hubbell.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. We're also joined at the table by our superintendent Steve Merly along with members of his cabinet. We are also joined tonight by two members of the inner city student council, President Emily Cup from Preble and Audra Gabrielson from West High School. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will go on to the mission statement, which I will read. Our mission in the Green Bay Public School District is to educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. All right, moving on to the open forum portion of our agenda, we will start with our inner city student council report, and I will turn it over to Emily.
Thank you. So the following report just highlights kind of the achievements and events that have been occurring in the Green Bay schools recently. Green Bay United Swimmers Lily Brigida Neverman, Ivana Neverman, Claire Seber and Ella Seber are advancing into the state swimming competition. That's upcoming. Preble's musical Sister Act has its first performance this Friday. Preble is also hosting the Barbara Book Drive in honor of our librarian who passed away this past year. East has its first musical performance for the Drowsy Chaperone, and that was this past weekend, and they've got upcoming performances as well this weekend. The Red Cross will be at West Wednesday for a blood drive. Southwest had started their practices for their musical this year, which is Mamma Mia. And something else kind of relevant is that Preble alumna McKenna Tofa has joined the Blue Man Group as a featured female percussionist. That's what we have for the ICSC.
Thank you very much, Emily. We appreciate that, and great job coordinating the quarterly meeting with the board earlier this week. Thank you for doing that. All right, we'll carry on to the public forum. I believe we have one person who's registered to call in, and I will let Josh help us with that. Alicia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can hear you. I didn't see you up on the screen. If you go ahead and introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes to make your comments.
Sure. My name is Alicia Vance Stratton. My address is 3396 Cottage Hill Drive in Green Bay, Wisconsin. These guys just wanted to call in, and sure, and I think I had shared the document with the board as well earlier via email. But just wanted to share that I'm happy to see that on the agenda, there is going to be discussion points around when are we going to? I don't want to say return to normal. I think none of us are going to be normal after all of this, but when do the board members as a whole start discussing how do we move forward, right? We can't, we're not going to mask our children forever. I hope not, and we're not going to quarantine healthy kids forever, or at least I hope not. So what are the benchmarks? What are the dates? What are the, you know, is it percent positive infected? Is it, you know, you know, vaccine dates? So now that we have the vaccine available for ages five to 11, you know? Again, I mean, we, it is not our children's job or our jobs really to protect humans against themselves. Unfortunately, I think human history has shown that as a whole, we probably don't do the best job of helping ourselves in many ways of life. But at this point, you know, the vaccine has been widely available for adults, so the people who want to take it have taken it, right? And now the vaccine is available for children, and so again, families have to make that choice. They have to assess what works for them and what they want to do, and if they want to take the vaccine, great. And if not, that is absolutely their choice. That is the beauty of being a human is we get free choice, free will, right? So we all have innate risks that we take in our life daily, whether it's driving through snowstorms, whether it's taking a vaccine, whether it's skydiving, we all have these things in our lives that have risks around them, and all we can do is assess what we think is best for ourselves and our families, do what we think is best, and for some of us, that means getting vaccinated, for some of us, that means not. And then we have to move forward, right? And so what does that look like? And I just really hope the Green Bay schools can start putting out some dates or benchmarks. And literally, if I take the numbers and I double check, if I take the numbers, our current infection rate is point zero zero four percent. Point zero zero four percent. There are so many kids that are being held out of school because of quarantining for close contact, that have absolutely tested negative, that have absolutely no symptoms, and they're still not allowed to come back into school. And so we just really need to look at what is this going to look like, and at what point do we move forward? We all take the precautions the best that we can for those of us that want to, and then we just have to kind of move forward from that standpoint. And so that was just really why I wanted, you know, to call in and just really have the board start thinking about what does that look like? And what is that going to look like? And then we just, it's scary, I get it, but we all, we just have to move forward, right? So that's kind of why I wanted to call in.
All right. Thank you very much, Alicia. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right.
All right, moving on in the agenda, item number three, the consent agenda for approval. First, is there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed for discussion? All right, seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved seven zero. All right, moving on to number five, our committee meeting reports. I'll start with our policy and governance committee and ask that Laura Leighton and Warren provide any updates.
Sure, thank you. For our last meeting, we had a little bit of technical difficulties starting out, but then we went along quite smoothly. One of the things that we have coming up is our dress code survey that will be going out in 2019. There was a revision done, and one of the things that was looked at was we're looking at the review of wearing headwear in school, and at the time, in 2019, revision was supportive education empowered the building.
Please turn you off.
Sorry. Sorry about that. The building administrator had the decision as to whether to allow the wearing of headwear. So that's one of the things that's going to be looked at. So a survey will be going out to all middle school, high school, parents, guardians, school support staff, school administration, and school resource officers to get a better idea of their thoughts and opinions on the current dress code policy and to see if they support it. Secondly, what we reviewed was presented by attorney field caller was the school distribution of non-school materials. And so there were some revisions proposed related to that, which are attached with all of the meeting materials, and we'll actually be going over those for action later this evening. This policy was initially done in 1981, then 1986, and it wasn't reviewed, revised again until 2015. So just a few changes related to making sure that we have followed the policies for what we put in that goes home with students in terms of extracurricular or any type of activities that the school shares. And I think that's about it.
All right, are there any questions for Laura or the Policy and Governance Committee? All right, moving on then, Education Committee meeting, and I will hand it over to the committee chair, Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you. Well, this item was originally originally calendared due to a motion that I made that I still intend to offer in the near future that would require board approval for class sizes over 30 at high school, over 28 at middle school, and over 26 at elementary. This was also a comprehensive discussion about class size, where staffing is currently set for both AGR achievement gap production identified schools and non-AGR schools. We talked about some classes where potentially there might be a desire to have larger classes, such as some sections of band, for example, to have a wider range of instruments. Those are often balanced out by other things, smaller classes for group lessons and so forth. And there was also a discussion about going forward for the 2022, 2023 year using a weighted resource allocation model, where staffing is, includes information on number of English learners and mobility in the school and socioeconomic status. That was just a preliminary, preliminary overview of that. Is that coming forward to the board at some point, Mr. Merly?
We're in the process right now, working through that with the elementary principals, and we hope to have something that would be in front of the board in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Any, so I'm holding on the motion that I had made because of some, it was incomplete, there's a couple of things, and there's some legitimate questions there. I need to make sure that it's not, the intent is not to, and never was to call special board meetings with a week left to go on the semester because a class size said 31. It was never about that kind of thing, nor was it about having to wait to let kids into a class or anything like that. It would be a it would be an additional opportunity to make the decision to, to spend the resources to make a class smaller. Other than that, I have nothing further. Do other committee members have anything to add? Actually, we have substitute committee members. Anything?
Okay. Andrew, a question, and I kind of came in at the end of it, so maybe I missed it, but one of the things that I find fascinating when it comes to all different fields and industries, but it's never been this way in education about employee shortage, shortage in the workforce. So the concept where we post a teaching job and we don't get any applicants. And I'm sure that's happening already, but as that issue becomes more pervasive, I just wonder how that impacts class size policy and how we're prepared as an education industry, not just the Green Bay Public Schools, but all over our region, state, and country about a shortage of educators. Does that come up at all, or maybe that's a separate issue? I don't know.
Well, I think obviously if there's, and this was discussed a little bit, what if, you know, what if there's class sizes that are too high because we don't have enough applicants? And I think at some, some buildings, we're in that situation now. I think if we're over on class size because we were not able in this job market to bring in enough qualified teachers to do it, then, you know, then whether there's a requirement of a board vote or not, well, some class sizes might be higher than we would like. And if there's a requirement, if there is a requirement for a board vote, we would have a list. These are the classes that are over the guideline because we don't have qualified teachers, and we don't want to bring in unqualified teachers to reduce class size. And I would imagine that list passes easily seven zero, and we move on, and I guess even if it failed, if they aren't applying, if there aren't applicants, there aren't applicants. So it would, I think in that case, it would represent a, perhaps a desire to invest more resource in trying to find the the staff, but sure, there will be times in the current job market where maybe it takes a while or we have to run a little bit higher to, because we have available, sure.
It's just a fascinating thing to think about, you know, class size policy has always been, you know, go and hire another teacher, go and hire another teacher, and all of a sudden, the conversation is there aren't any more teachers higher, so. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to my computer froze. That's fun. Operations Committee meeting, and I believe the chair is Tom Smith.
Here we go. Thanks, Eric. I just got it working, and then you shut me out. We met, when we met for Operations Committee, Josh did a really nice job, put together a presentation for us sharing the third Friday in September count date numbers. I'm not going to run over all the numbers. The PowerPoint has been attached to the meeting, so you can go out and you can peruse that. Like I said, did a really good job kind of explaining. A couple notes that I did take, I mean, our count date was September 17th, and for students to be counted, they needed to be in attendance that day. But if they were sick that day, but they attended, you know, attended prior, attended after, we were able to count. So the numbers are always fluctuating. So that is just one date and one point in time, but those numbers are constantly fluctuating throughout the course of the year. Our next date will be the second Friday in January. A couple things I noted, since September of 2016, which is when the reporting that Josh shared with us, we have seen a decrease in membership counts every count date except for September of 2019. So I mean, we are seeing that consistent downward trend in those numbers, and that's consistent, I believe, across the state. I don't think that is unique to us as a district. The difference between January, our January count date of 2021 in September 21 was weird, out by 67 students. And if you want to check out the report, there is a breakdown. It sounds like it was really, really manual to get the information, but there's a breakdown too on exit reasons, which I think are kind of important. The reasons cited, people moved, they unenrolled, so they were below that enrollment, that mandatory enrollment age. Open enrolled, out, homeschooled, then private school, and drop out. But we didn't see any huge shifts. It was pretty consistent. When we looked at the change numbers between enrolling into the district and enrolling out of the district, I think enrolling in was 29 and enrolling out was 30. So it was pretty much, you know, a wash when you looked at those differences. Yeah, so I mean, the, take the time, I had asked about this afternoon if she could share the the PowerPoint, because there's a lot of interesting information in there. So take the time to look at it. Anything else? Is that everything?
Any questions there for the Operations Committee?
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, moving on to item number six, discussion and pandemic update, and I believe there's some different presentations, but I'll hand it over to Superintendent Merly first.
So as we all know, we now have eligibility for those children that are age five to 11 for the vaccine that's starting to roll out locally. Recognizing that, we wanted to make sure that we stayed abreast of the conversation here at the table so that if there is consideration for making changes, we have the opportunity to be well-prepared for that prior to them taking place. So today, we're going to hear from Josh. He's going to talk a little bit about our current numbers. Then after that, Kristin Johnson and Heidi Neverman are on our screen, and they're going to talk to us a little bit about their current procedures. And then when we're done with that, I'll come back and talk a little bit about where we might go from our next step process. So I know we've been experiencing a bit of a data challenge today with DHS, which Josh can share with you. But Josh, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about where we're at today.
Right. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, we have been challenged by DHS today. Their data hasn't been a lot, hasn't been live through their API. I was able to get a download though, so that we could see where we're at. So one of the reasons we calendared this item is your original motion regarding face coverings in the district. Call for an emergency board meeting when the numbers reached 100 per 100,000 in Brown County. And there was a time starting in mid-October to the beginning of November where the trend was downward pretty precipitously, and we were kind of casting forward and thinking, oh, man, we better, we better remind them. We've got a couple of holidays coming up. And then the last week or so, it has reversed trend a little bit, but I will show you what that looks like right now. I just got to share my screen here. And this is from, it's from DHS here. So this is kind of that trend that I was, I was talking about, where we kind of crested at that 450 or so mark, and we dropped over the course of a couple of weeks all the way down into the low 200s. You can see over the last week, it has popped up to the high 200s now, so that that trend has not continued through this week. But this is kind of the current state of the numbers in Brown County. This is at the bottom of our public dashboard normally when the API from DHS is working. Like I said, I just downloaded this as well. Also, on our I think I've got to stop sharing and share again. Hang on one second here. I do want to just go over the rest of the numbers on our public dashboard very quickly for you before I turn it over to Kristin and Heidi. So you can always visit this link to see the most up-to-date numbers based on the contact tracing in case management the nurses are doing. We are currently sitting at a point four six active case rate. I think the the caller said point zero zero four. That's the decimal, not the percentage. So it's between, it's about half a percent of student and staff population. Currently, you can see the history of staff in student quarantines and isolations. You can look at just the isolations, which would be essentially people that were treated as if they were positive, and the quarantines, which is a removal for precautionary reasons, both on the students' side and the staff's side. Even here, looking at students, you can see a general downward trend over since the beginning of the, of the school year here. You can see where the testing really started to spike. Once school started, you can also see a history of our active case rate going back till last January, and this is for both our students and our staff. The kind of a general, general downward trend here, still higher than we'd like, clearly. And I'm sure you've taken a look at the breakdown by schools here. With that, Steve, do we want to turn it over to Heidi, or I guess I should ask? Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Josh. So again, as he indicated, you know, one of the things that we try to do is we try to monitor these numbers on a regular basis, look at them daily. And as he mentioned, you know, we saw that downward trend, and part of our thinking was rather than just wait till we get to an emergency meeting, it would be to review our current procedures and then consider whether or not there are changes to those procedures that we might like to entertain, and then set it up so that we can go through a scheduled process to do that. Personally, I think that that helps those members of the general public who may want to provide input to it, to know if it's scheduled. So we thought the first step in that discussion would be to have Kristin and Heidi with us, share a little bit about what some of our current procedures are. They've got several documents that are uploaded to the board docs, so you can see those and follow along. Kristin, why don't I turn it over to you, and you can give them a short summary of where we're at right now in terms of current procedures?
Good evening and thank you. So currently, for students who are isolating or staff who are isolating and positive, they are out for 10 days from the onset of their symptoms or from the onset of a test if they do not have any symptoms. That is following the CDC guidelines, and we have not changed that. We've continued with that process. For a non-household quarantine, in October, we did change where we started offering them a, it was actually the end of October, the option to test out on day six, returning to school on day eight. If they do not opt to do the test out, then they return to school on day 10. We don't have a lot of parents taking advantage of that, but we are offering that with everyone that we speak with, whether it's through a phone call and/or an email, just so that they've got those dates in writing. Also in October, the other thing that we changed is we did stop sending home siblings of students that were ill and waited to send those kids home until we had a confirmed positive. We found very good success with that and haven't had any issues with that that we're aware of. And also in November, last week, Wednesday, we started in-school COVID testing. So our nurses and then a few of our contact tracers have also started doing some testing with parent permission. Any questions on that?
Think so.
Thank you, Kristin. So our next conversation with you is, as Kristin indicated, we have had conversations at the board table. We followed up with it as administrative team to make sure that the practices that we have underway are in accordance with the recommendations that come to us from the CDC and the Department of Health Services here in Wisconsin. And to that end, as she indicated, we've got quarantine and isolation practices that follow those rules. The CDC did come out with that early opt. We moved to that, which gives those folks the opportunity to come back early. We continue to follow those quarantine and isolation practices and await potential changes that come to us from DHS and from CDC. We do the same with masking. So our facial covering requirements right now mirror those that come from the CDC and the DHS. So I think the big question that we, excuse me, as a, as a group have to answer is whether or not we want to continue to follow the CDC and DHS guidelines, in which case we'll monitor those for you, and as changes come about, we'll bring those to you for action, or whether or not we want to Or whether or not we want to consider deviating from those CDC guidelines, and then if so, what options are available to us? Excuse me. So I think that's the first question. Doesn't need to be answered tonight, but I think this would be a good place to start that dialogue.
So I could, I'll jump in first with my thoughts. So as we know, the, the vaccines are, are coming out and be, being available to uh, students as young as five. I realize that this presents uh, kind of an interesting discussion about uh, our younger students head start, three, four, four-year-olds. For me personally, I'd like to see uh, us seeing what it looks like. It's still based upon a metric to um, start to see what we can remove in terms of uh, getting back to getting more kids in school. When I think about the, the different strategies that we have in place, um, you know, certainly masking is still an important part of that. Although we can, can maybe have a discussion around that. One of the suggestions that I would be interested in is uh, ending our quarantine of close contacts. I don't believe uh, there are any other districts around us that are still doing that practice. Um, and so, uh, and certainly gets more kids in school uh, more often. Would also be interested in trying that to see how, how does that impact things? Do we see the numbers in our district go up because we took that away? Well, then, then we know by removing that factor and we saw what its impact was. Perhaps we remove it and we still, you know, we don't see an increase or the, the numbers continue to go down. And we know that, that um, what impact that has had versus changing a whole bunch of things all at once. So I, I guess my, that would, that would be the first step. And then I, I would be interested in um, Steve and his team and the health uh, professionals that we've consulted with to see if they have any other re- uh, recommendations that they would have. Again, we've said multiple times as a board that you know, we're getting a lot of guidance from other people, and that includes uh, you know, the CDC and DHS and also our local health professionals. Uh, certainly Heidi and Kristen have uh, been closest to it uh, in our district here is our staff and the other uh, contact tracers. So I'd be interested in hearing what their recommendations are as we start to slowly get to something. And perhaps uh, something is, can be presented to us at the December board meeting for us to have discussion and potentially take action on. So um, just my thoughts on all of that right now and be curious to hear what other people think. Go ahead, Laura.
Um, I wouldn't mind hearing from Dr. Um, I feel it was Dr. Hoyman again, too. If she, if she would be willing to come back and, and um, give a kind of, I, I remember her report the last time he had. She was able to speak about kind of what she has seen in the clinic and in the hospitals and things like that. So um, yeah, I'd be interested in that if, if, if it's doable.
We can certainly invite her back. They've been very supportive of that. So I, I, if they can't uh, get Dr. Hoyman, I'm sure they can provide us with another healthcare professional.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, I like your suggestion, Eric, of only changing one variable at a time. Um, because I think that that uh, and, and again, I like the, the suggestion you made, because I think that getting kids in school has always been and keeping them there has always been one of our priorities. It's part of why we were, require masks to help decrease the exposure for kids so they can end up being in school more. So that I would be comfortable with that, I think, assuming that numbers are going down and indications are that you know, there isn't any, um, there isn't another surge coming or here or whatever. So and then I, you know, at that point of nothing changes and our numbers look good, you know, I think you then come back the not January, because we will have had a, a break, but maybe come back in February, have another conversation about other things we can change. I mean, I, at some point, the, the uh, CDC is probably going to come out with new recommendations. If they do that, then I would for sure want to look at what they're recommending. And if they change more than one thing, then we can consider that.
Any other comments or ideas? Steve is, uh, so the changes to any uh, close contact quarantine, um, does that require board action? Or I mean, we've made changes kind of along the way and you've updated us. So could that be something that uh, that your team uh, takes action on without coming to us?
We could look at that a couple of ways. I, we could either bring it back here to the table, uh, which I think from a transparency standpoint, might be our, our best choice to do that. Um, the other thing, and this goes back to the, the motion, I, and uh, the uh, trigger that Andrew introduced last time is um, the board could decide, I, for instance, in December, we could look at some trigger points that would uh, initiate those activities. Uh, so that uh, rather than needing a, a board meeting, uh, if we wanted to look at uh, particular thresholds where we would want to step back on quarantining, step back on masking, uh, we could put those in place too as part of that motion. So I think we could look at either way.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to, to put in a, a motion with some benchmarks that triggers action versus us all having to assemble, especially over the holidays and as things are moving quickly. For us to be able to see what those recommendations are, uh, agree to something and then put those triggers in place. And then again, we can certainly talk about it month by month as things continue to change. But to me, it's better than having to try to coordinate a special meeting to be able to make that happen. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, and I just want to confirm. So for our um, five through twelve-year-olds, if they are vaccinated and they are close contacts, they do not need to quarantine, correct? As long as they're asymptomatic?
That's correct. And then remember, they need to go through the full regimen, so they need their first dose, their second dose in two weeks after that. And then once they've reached that point, uh, then just like our uh, twelve and olders, uh, they would not be required to go through that quarantine process.
So just naturally, as parents, if parents would choose to vaccinate their kids, we will see more kids not being but we should see our quarantine numbers decrease from that alone. Okay, thank you.
If I just might add too, one of the things that I think we might want to consider is we have that conversation in December and consider what might uh, potential action look like. Uh, remember it is students that are older than five, so we would probably be bringing to you a conversation about grade banding. So we would look at students K-12, uh, and then we would look at our early childhood and pre-kindergarten teach, uh, students rather uh, as a separate population, because uh, they're not eligible for the vaccine. So we might uh, might want to have that conversation either today or have that conversation when we come back together in December about whether we want to lump them together or whether we want to look at them separately.
I mean, that, that concept is hard for me, because one, you know, certainly don't love the idea, but then when I look at uh, where we've had most of our, our close contacts and most of our quarantine and a lot of our virtual, it's been with our youngest kids, and we know that, you know, they're sneezing directly in each other's faces and uh, you know, so that the germs that, that happen in those kind of classrooms are pretty significant too. So but I would imagine based upon conversations that we've had at the board table that we would want to do that. Am I correct? Or in, in terms of having separate guidelines for our youngest students?
Yeah, I would, I would say at least talk about it, because of course in the head start staff, they all have to, they're mandated to be vaccinated. So that's a little bit of a different situation than if we don't mandate the other, the four K teachers. Um, anyway, I mean, it it's, it's good to be consistent, but I, it would be good to have a conversation about it when we get to that point next month.
Just to be uh, um, they're mandated because they're, they fall under federal law.
Andrew, did you?
I, the same, at the same point that Laura made, that it's not um, as a, as a district, we're not requiring, we're strongly recommending and making available, but not requiring the vaccine for staff. But certain federal contracts head start being one of them fall, fall under that.
Sure. Okay. So Steve, do you feel like you've got the direction? It sounds like uh, having some different recommendations potentially for action and being triggered by certain metrics rather than a special board meeting. Um, and then uh, we'll have a, a robust discussion and a vote for action at our meeting in December about uh, any changes to our, our procedures.
So we'll certainly, we'll start putting that together now. Uh, we'll make sure that that's ready. Uh, when the board agenda posts uh, the week prior to, so that you have plenty of time to look at it. If between now and then, uh, you get any feedback from the general public, you have any questions or you have any other considerations that you'd like us to move forward uh, for discussion in December, please let me know. That'll give me the opportunity to make sure that I'm working with our uh, in-house uh, health professionals and our community health professionals. So we can bring you the most comprehensive uh, conversation starters when we get to December. And then we'll also reach out, make sure that either Dr. Hoyman or someone else is able to join us that evening uh, so that they can uh, both present and be available for questions.
All right, right. Sounds good. Thanks, everyone. All right, um, moving on then to item number seven, action items, uh, policy eight fifty-two, distribution of non-school materials. Is there someone uh, who would like to make that motion?
I can. I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy eight-five-two, distribution of non-school materials as presented be approved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Andrew.
I have a couple of things. So with this, um, with the distribution of non, non-school materials, is there, um, what happens if there is a, I guess, a a dispute about whether something falls into one of the categories or not?
So the normal process of that, also I believe Melissa's online with us, uh, the normal process for that is that uh, those come in, those are reviewed, I, here at the uh, District Office, uh, and then approved or I, uh, not approved. If they're not approved, um, there's an uh, opportunity for them to appeal. Uh, and then we go through it collectively as a team review it. Uh, at least to date, uh, during the time that I've been here, uh, we haven't had any issues that have resulted in either uh, a contested review, uh, or dissatisfaction from those who are seeking to post. Melissa?
I don't have anything to add that's accurate. If the ten years that I've been here, we haven't had any disputes either.
Okay, and when this is um, we talked about limited distribution of non-school materials, does that apply uh, just to things we like send home with kids? Or what all is, what all is included here?
This is um, material that third parties request of us to send home with kids. So uh, think of the Tuesday envelopes. Some of our schools have moved to electronic distribution. Um, our high schools post on, online these materials in um, in newsletters and those sorts of things. But it's what third parties are asking us to send home to kids.
Okay, is, is that, um, I guess I, it doesn't seem that clear in the, in the policy to me that we're mostly talking about that. I, I knew from experience that I thought we were probably talking about that. I'm just for example, are we, um, you know, we have the, the wellness policy which covers a, a wide range of things. If there's a, if there's a soda ad in in a program, in an athletic program that's being distributed, is the, you know, is the district distributing that? I mean, it's because it doesn't say, you know, it's the, it doesn't say distribution of, you know, sending materials home with all students or distribution, you know, automatic distribution to all families, right? It's, this could be, someone could attempt to interpret this wider than what I think is intended.
I, I think the policy in section two and the implementation makes sure that it's all non-school materials being distributed in the schools. And the example you gave, Andrew, a program at a football game or a basketball game, those are school materials produced by the school and a separate policy regarding advertising and sponsorships would apply to that, and that's what we try to do with this policy. We had, there was a discrepancy between things that are paid for, for advertising and the, the free distribution of third-party materials through this policy. And we uh, wanted to align the language of both of those policies so that there would be consistent treatment, whether it's paid or a nonprofit sending home materials to our students.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right. Beth, we're set to vote.
Online voting has been opened. All votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries seven-zero. Uh, and finally, the agenda setting, uh, board meeting schedule. You can see uh, later this month, we have our operations and education committee meeting. Uh, and then the month of December, you can see the uh, regular schedule with our regular board meeting falling on Monday, December thirteenth. Does anybody have any questions or comments with regard to the schedule? All right. And with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second, all in favor? I, I post. All right, motion carries seven-zero, and that concludes our November meeting. Thank you, everyone. We are concluding at six forty-four PM.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero-four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.